And you were all set. Have a good meeting.
Thank you. So. We will take an outtake motion to exit executive session at six oh five and enter open session. The other will call them.
I'll second, uh, so who's on me?
Second, okay, Gates.
Yes.
Brandon Lee, yes, LeVon, yes, or Hockley, yes. Situit School Committee is committed to providing an environment of respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcomed and respected. We ask our committee members and all can participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. A public comment will be available via Zoom as well as in person and community members can email me at andbranleyne@sit.org with questions. All right, we will start with public comments. Seeing no in person and.
Ms. Brandon Lee, you have no virtual hands raised.
Thank you, Seth. Great. All right. Next up is our student representatives, Ms. Redell and Mr. Bacher.
Good evening. Would like to welcome Emma back.
Welcome back.
Welcome back, Emma. Congratulations, congratulations to the drama club that put on an amazing show last weekend between the hilarious actors, impressive production, and awesome live music. The show was certainly something to write a home about. The Sailors Boys, the Sailors Boys Hockey Team led an impressive season all the way to the finals at TV Garden. While the final result was not in our favor, we want to shout out all the players, coaches, and parents for a dedicated season. Last Friday, the freshman sophomore semiformal returned, held at Pier Forty Four. Students enjoyed dancing, snacking, and likely taking many, many selfies. Able Brains quickly approaching and Model U M is getting very excited for their spring conference in Washington, D.C. Club members from all grades are working hard on position papers, research, and lots of binder organization. Congratulations to the Cyber Sailors Robotics Team taking home first place at the New England Greater Boston Competition this past weekend and winning them a spot at the upcoming district's competition.
The last but most regular college decisions will be out by the end of the week. We're so proud of everyone who has made it through this entire college process and we look forward to seeing where everyone will be attending this year. Last Monday, S H S offered the Ask Fab Career Exploration Program sponsored by the Department of Defense for students from grade ten to twelve to explore different career opportunities. Questions vary from English comprehension, vocational understanding, in science and math knowledge. And I know friends who went who aren't interested in going into military, but there are other opportunities there, so we're really excited that S H S offered that. E L A M C A S testing for sophomores will be taking place tomorrow and Wednesday. Math M C A S will take place on May sixteenth and seventeenth, and the biology testing will be on June sixth and seventh. Shout out to the S H S students and staff that participated in the We Stand With Ukraine fundraiser this weekend, whether in the items they offered in the auction, the Ukrainian performance from the high school treble choir. Special thanks to senior Alisa Hill, who is both in charge of coordinating musical program and performed several, performed several pieces herself, both in Ukrainian and in English. She actually spent time working with the treble choir on how to pronounce the Ukrainian song because they got, they all practicing in Ukrainian. So we really appreciate her extra effort, especially knowing that she is good for violence there herself. And she was also part of the robotics team, so she's had a very busy weekend. Starting next Monday will be Stress Left, Laugh More Week. In collaboration with the Art Club, Bring Change to Mind and Be Kind Club, the goal is to raise awareness of mental wellness and healthy coping strategies for both students and staff. This week includes chalk decorating of the sidewalks, affirmations in the bathroom, as well as small baskets of candy. Any questions?
And thank you so much. Any questions, anyone?
Okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Oh, really?
Hey, next up on our agenda tonight, celebrating student learning with our Fine Arts Music Department, Mr. Jim Thomas and company. And Miss, Mr. Lasar. You want me to share my screen?
That'd be great. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. First, I'd like to thank Ms. Lasar for, for joining us tonight and for designing this program, this project for the students in this grade seven, eighth band. And I'd like to thank our, our awesome students here for giving it their time of talent tonight. Um, yeah, absolutely. So the focus of tonight is on our Gates Recital Concert Series, which takes place in the seven, eight band. And I'm going to give a brief overview on that, and then we're going to ask a couple of student questions. Then we'll wrap up with a stirring version of Superstition by Steve Wonder. So, yeah, it should be awesome. Um, so basically it starts with these students forming small groups of four to six students per group. And their first task is to select a piece of music. And that in and of itself requires some consensus building and collaboration and all that sort of stuff. Then from there, they have to design a rehearsal schedule that's outside of school entirely. And that requires some organization and some compromise and all those sorts of things. Um, I, we strive to have the students utilize some of the rehearsal strategies that we use in the band. Whether it's taking a section slower, isolating parts, working on balance plan and agent intonation, those sorts of things. Um, so students are reaching musical decisions as a group. All the while, we're working within a timeline, um, because there's a concert coming, so there is an urgency to the whole thing. Um, and then it comes full circle with them presenting their piece in the, in the actual concert. Um, one of the other things that I think is important to focus on is how it builds community. These students are working in a small group and, and then in interacting with each other in new and different ways. And they take that back with them to the, to the big band and it forms a richer environment for everyone. And since it's a series, um, they do this several times throughout the year, so they're forming new and different relationships throughout the year. Pretty cool. So we have a few questions. I'll start with Luke. I thought it'd be good to get their perspective on this. Can we come to you? So Luke, what, what did you learn as a result of this project?
I think the biggest thing we learned was how to balance our sound more. Because obviously these groups are a lot smaller than the regular band. And so in a regular band, you still have to play soft when you play soft and louder when you play louder. But in these groups, if you play too loud, then somebody else won't hear it. And if you play too soft, then you won't be heard. So you have to, we don't call that.
Thanks, Luke. Mae, so next, Mae, what did you find most challenging?
Um, so the most challenging part was all this meeting up and finding a time that works for all of us because we all are like really busy. And we have to practice after school and it can't be during school hours. And what was really hard was we had to find music for all of us. And obviously I don't play all the instruments, so I can't find different pieces for them. So it was hard to see what works for everyone.
Thanks, Mae. And Chandler has our last question. Chandler, what did you find most rewarding about this project?
Uh, what I found most rewarding about this project actually happened the day after the concert. And I was in school, I was just walking through the hallway and one of my sixth grade teachers came up to me. And he complimented me on how good I did at the concert. And that just like, that was really wanting to make this, I don't know, that compliment from one of my teachers before.
Well, thank you, guys. Now comes the fun part. We'll get to hear you guys play whenever you're ready. So again, once again, it's been great to, to perform and inform. So, uh, thank you. I don't know if there's any questions, but.
Thank you.
Awesome. All right, we'll break this down super quick.
And also to our other presenters, where I think that was like the best. Uh, next up on our celebration of student learning is going to be a world language with a show.
There's a lot of apps to follow. I'm sure this wonderful, you people, you guys, entertaining. I could sing it if you think you could. I won't do that to anybody. In all seriousness, though, thank you so much for having me here this evening to talk about the wonderful things happening in the world language department. Um, the first slide here is how we celebrate student learning in our department. And I think as I look at these two pictures, it's occurring to me that perhaps I took the word celebrate a little too literally here. Um, because on the left, we have a group of students that just came back from Ireland, from our first ever West Cork, um, Ireland exchange. And those students are preparing to participate in the St. Patrick's Day Celebration in West Cork, where they were featured in the parade from town. And then on the right, you have a picture of the entire Gates Student Caucus celebrating Lunar, uh, New Year. Um, and that was funded by the Gates P T O, and this year we were able to, um, offer an invitation to all of the students at Gates so that they were able to see this awesome cultural programming. So I wanted to show these two photos and talk about these two events, just to emphasize that in the world language department, our student learning is happening outside of your traditional classroom walls. And that's really part of our mission as world language educators. Um, and how do we celebrate academic achievement? I think we do this in some wonderful ways. Um, as you know, two years ago, in twenty twenty one, we started awarding the state seal of illiteracy, which says that a student is proficient in English and another language. And in twenty twenty one, when we started, we awarded five seals. And this year, we're about to award at least fourteen. We are awaiting some domain data. Um, but in two short years, I think to almost triple numbers is incredible. So that's an example of how we celebrate academic achievement. We'll also, um, in May, be inducting, uh, students, our juniors, our sitting juniors into their respective honor societies. And last year, we began a chapter for the Mandarin, um, honor society. So now our students of French, Spanish, and Mandarin will earn, um, induction into their respective society. And then, um, something I'm very excited about is we have five sitting seniors who are, um, going to earn the pathway designation for global citizenship this year. And we never thought that that would happen. We really thought the trajectory would be a more two to three year plan, but these were super ambitious seniors. Um, that really were doing this work. We just didn't know they were doing this work. And so now with a, with a push to do some capstone work and some extracurricular reflection, they are going to earn that. And you'll see them at graduation in some, um, colored soul that they were. Um, I wanted to circle back to talking a little bit about the seal of illiteracy in the next slide. It'll entertain me for just a minute as I talk data with you. Um, we use the stamp data, stamp assessment this year for the first time with the help and support of, um, Mr. School. We were able to stamp, um, which is the assessment used by the state. It's one of the assessments used by the state to determine qualification for the seal of illiteracy. And we were able to give that assessment to all of our high school world language students, which is remarkable. And for the first time ever, world language teachers have standardized data based on something that's not locally developed and locally administered. Um, and so that's truly valuable. Um, and so ACTFO, which is the National Association for World Language Teaching, has said that when a district starts world language in sixth grade, like we do here in Situit, our students would reach an intermediate mid, which is in green. It's a five on this assessment. And the world language teacher said, oh, no, we can do better than that. We can do way better than that. And so they set six point five as their target for any student that does the language progression through A P. So they wanted to exceed what the national standards were. And I thought that was quite ambitious, but I, I trusted that they would be able to do this. And so when we looked at the data and we've spent several collaboration meetings and department meetings, being able to examine and talk about this data. And it's wonderful to watch and see because like I said, it's the first time we've been able to do something like this. You'll see our course, um, levels on the left, our target end of year composite score. So those teachers set those scores by saying if a kid gets to A P here at Situit High School, they'll get a six point five on the stamp at the end of the year. Um, and then if you look down at our level one, we thought those kids would get a two point five, which is a novice. And on the right side, the mid-year, um, middle of the year composite score, those were our actual composite scores from our January administration of the stamp test. So as you can see, in some of our levels already in January, we were on target or exceeded target. So that mission of let's be better than what the nation says is, is just about achieved in almost all our levels. Um, and if we haven't gotten there yet, we are so close. For our two C P students, which are most of our juniors, we want to see them at a three point five. They're at a three point three in January. So we're pretty confident that they'll gain those two temps that they need, um, at the end of the year. So, um, this is the Spanish data I wanted to share with you just because that's our highly populated language at this time. Our French data was practically identical, off by just tenths, um, which speaks volumes to the work being done in the modern languages. Our Mandarin data looks different just because learning Mandarin is so different. Our scores are a little bit lower than our modern languages, and that is due to the fact that those students have to learn a whole different writing system. So it's a little bit more complicated. Um, but I wanted to share with you, um, what we're doing with the data because in the next slide, you'll see that that is something that we're looking forward to. The last thing, the last bullet point is that we really are looking forward to continuing to stamp test all of the students here at Situit High School. Um, and using the data to drive our instruction and our curriculum. We're also, um, really excited that our, uh, exchange programs are back up and running and thriving. Um, our Irish exchange students will be visiting us in October. And then our French students, French exchange students, we're heading to France in about fifteen days. And our Spanish exchange is in the application process. So something two years ago I was worried would never happen again is happening well beyond our expectations. So lots to look forward to in the world language department. And our last photo, I just, I still can't believe that this happened, but those are students in Magdalena Pago's. That was thirty-one students got the opportunity to travel to Magdalena Pago's in February. And from what I hear, that is not a trip for the faint of heart. Lots of closed ferries across open oceans, lots of motion sickness, but wonderful opportunities, wonderful sights. And some of the parents have said to us that their kids, um, will never be the same, that they have really seen and done some things they never thought that they would be able to do in a high school program. I'm not going to play the drums for you, but if you have questions, I'm happy to take any question or comment.
Pretty close second.
Yeah. I won't talk about that.
A traveling world.
Thank you, thank you.
Also excited about the eighth grader going to go back soon.
Yes, yes, I, I'm, I'm really impressed. Like I said, two years ago, I was like, oh, my God, did we just lose our ability to do all these wonderful things? And, um, nope, everybody, one of the first things I said in September, let's get these trips back up and running. So let's do it.
Um, I was just, can you remind us, you said you have five sitting seniors for that pathway?
Yeah.
Can you remind us of the significance of that?
Yeah, I would love to. Um, when I try to explain this to people, um, I basically say it is specialized coursework and extracurricular work, um, capstones and projects. Um, that kind of declare like a high school major, I would say. Um, and so, um, students are attracted to these programs simply because they have authentic interest in them, but also because, you know, on a college resume, these are things that set you apart. Um, the reflections that they're doing, the, the bridges that they're making with the community. We have students interning with farms so that they can learn to practice sustainable farming and, and irrigation. Um, and then go to impoverished countries and share what they've learned. Um, so there's, of course, there's this piece about like how it will help them be college and career ready, but also this piece about how it will make them be life ready. Um, so it's something they can put on resumes. Um, it is something that will help them determine potential paths for, for careers. Um, it opens the doors for different awards and honor society distinctions here, potential scholarships. Um, and then, of course, they get to look a little bit jazzy at graduation because they've either done this right now in the business area or in the global citizenship area, and then we'll onboard another one this year. So, um, I think it just really sets them apart as really dedicated, um, dedicated students.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just a follow-up to that. Yeah, this stuff, this is fantastic. It is great to see that the exchange program, the national, are back up. Um, relative to the pathways program, I know that at least mine are saying that they're fairly new, past couple of years. Um, kind of what's your plan for introducing the opportunities for pathways? Will you mention it to incoming freshmen or is it for sophomores and juniors? And how is that going to work?
So I'm really glad that you brought that up. We started talking about this at our S H S showcase night when our, um, seventh and eighth grade families came up to see what Situit High School was all about. When we had our breakout sessions with department chairs, we talked about these opportunities. Um, when we did our course registration and course carousels with the program of studies and, and signing up for courses for next year, we had, um, teachers share presentations with students about these programs and about these offerings. And then I'm meeting one-on-one with students expressing interest to sort of map out their four years with them or their two years. Or like the five students that were rock stars this year that said, I can do this in a year. Um, so we're trying to get our middle schoolers and share it with them. It's included now in the program of study, so it's becoming authentic, organic conversations as we discuss courses for next year. Um, and then onboarding students as teachers are sending students to me saying, you know, this kid's in international affairs and doing amnesty international and participating in exchange. This really sounds like someone who really is, um, a good candidate for the global citizenship pathway program. So we're trying to get them at multiple entry points, um, and make that personal connection with them to guide them through how to finish that work in whatever number of years they have left with us.
That's great. And, um, as a follow-up to that, if I'm a student and I apply to college and I say that I'm a, which I'm a proper analogy, do they know what that is?
Yes. So this is, we're not the first high school to do something like this. Um, there's innovation pathways. I'm sure you've heard of other, um, programs like this. Um, but we always, you know, we would encourage the counselor to give context to the specifics of the program that the student is in. And so just last week, Mr. Ramari and I met with the guidance counselors, and we talked about what that could look like for a student applying with a pathway designation. What are some things you could say in their recommendation letter about the work that they've done? Because students volunteering at farms to learn about how to create safe water sources for impoverished countries really are excellent high school students. And, and that should be recognized in a, in a cover letter.
That's.
So, yeah.
Great, thank you.
One question, step down. Uh, sometimes it comes up on, in different threads and things about, um, world language at the elementary levels. And that, I'm not trying to speak on spot at all, but it's scary and read everybody on my laptop. But is there something, even with getting more data and looking at where our students are starting in sixth grade, it just sort of makes you think about where they could be if they started in fourth or fifth and what value that would have?
The sweet spot is third grade or.
Okay.
Um, just based on that chart that I showed you, um, you know, we really want our students to be superior in world language and to get them to an advanced superior level. We need to start them in third grade. They really need a good nine years to get there. So the sweet spot really is third grade. Um, it would be my dream.
Chat your shame.
To implement an elementary world language program. I do know that it's quite costly. Wait, wait, we haven't even met, but, um, but perhaps we can talk about that in the future. We are in, in the midst of strategic planning and, and coming up with some vision. So, um, it would be amazing, even if we trickle down into fifth, how much more progress we would make because those young minds really do grasp onto second language acquisition just a little bit quicker than, um, the adolescent mind. Um, I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Well, I, I think just building on that, I, as someone who knows nothing about world languages, I would be interested in a future presentation about that. Like what the sweet spot looks like, what that, what the research says, what the benefits would be outside of just learning a language. So.
I would love to.
Well, that's the interesting pros and cons to having more data is that now it's sort of, your data supports potential needs or, you know, avenues to explore that, you know, has more justification if it's any real data that third grade is the sweet spot. We're looking at budgets. You have a, you know, stronger argument in that way. So.
Well done. We can talk a lot about that, but I'll come back.
Thank you, thank you.
And we'll get coffee.
Great. Hi, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, Superintendent Burkehead, uh, turning over to you, I believe, for me.
It's, I have, uh, contracts to, uh, put before the board for, uh, for approval, my recommendations. So context for each of these. Uh, I think since I started three years ago, my promises and, um, my entry plan and my application process and answering questions was to, to really focus on building high performing teams. A big part of that, and we're still hearing that from our feedback, uh, to the current day is, uh, consistency. You know, and starting with central office and then working way down through all of our educators. So, uh, this is an attempt to do that, and, um, we have these recommendations. And um we have these recommendations and some new individuals. So uh the first one would be um. Our assistant superintendent is citing Driscoll, I'm recommending to the uh committee that we um. Extend her contract or create a new contract, a five-year contract, which would align with the superintendent's contract. Um, in fact, in July first, twenty twenty-three, uh, through June uh thirtieth of twenty twenty-eight.
Okay, great. Uh, I will make a motion of superintendent's contract. Good luck in your work.
I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the assistant superintendent's contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next contract is a new member of the team. Dr. Tom Rad, uh, from director of business and finance. Tom was appointed recently, decided to join our team and similarly, um, would like to um. Have his contract be a five-year contract, actually July one, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, in line with um superintendent's and assistant superintendent's this time.
I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the director of business and finance contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the last position is um. New position, we had this year director of supplemental services, uh, in which Don Moffett did a wonderful job and I want to thank her for. For commitment and uh any new positions challenging, but um really a lot of great things happen out of that, including support for our students, especially our elementary students. For um extracurricular work, um, and also securing um. Thousands and thousands of dollars in grants to also help our children and our staff. So we wanted to continue that. I want to uh. Make sure people understand that this uh position um is funded by professor grants, not in the general budget. So it's um, it's created a way to continue that position and I'd like to uh. Well, they may consider Julie Ward become principal at Haddaway for that position and by doing so approving our contract for. One year, June, it's gonna be July first of twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-four.
I make a motion that the school committee vote to approve the director of supplemental services contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Right, uh, up next in old business, we have FY twenty-four budget revision, Dr. Dutch.
I think the superintendent was trying to send a message by labeling it as old business.
Noted.
Uh, many of you are aware that since the school committee originally approved budget for FY twenty-four. The governor released her budget, um, which increased revenue to the town. For chapter seventy-eight, which is educational aid, as well as unrestricted government funding. Uh, additionally, the town found out that their um bill for um county retirement. For retirees was less than we had anticipated in the financial forecast. So as a result, there was increased funding available and the financial forecast committee. Did vote to move those funds into the FY twenty-four town budget. Uh, as you know, we get two-thirds of that. So that created an additional three hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars for the school department. The plan is to allocate the additional revenue toward adding to the following line items. Teaching, one hundred thousand dollars. Heat, eighty thousand dollars. Electricity, one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Fuel, twenty thousand dollars for our buses and maintenance, forty thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars. We have to answer any questions.
Hey, thank you so much. Uh, question, can I ask you something?
Can you just, um, Dr. Dutch, can you just help us understand? How you did, how it was decided, like these allocations? Just curious.
Sure, um, the, the amount for teaching, um, we've, we've been looking, as you'll find here tonight, uh, from assistant superintendent. We've been looking at enrollment and as a result, we feel like there's going to be a need for an additional teacher. So we've added that uh amount into that line item as well as providing a little bit of cushion for replacement positions. Which we budgeted uh very conservatively for those who are retiring. Um, heat, we, we know that natural gas is fluctuating and unpredictable. So we, we decided to put a little additional there. Now, as far as electricity, we level funded that line item this year compared to, uh, well, for FY twenty-four. Compared to FY twenty-three in anticipation that we will have solar panels on the high school route. That is not going to happen, at least not this summer. Uh, and we're not sure of the timeline. It's, it's being held up with national grid at this point. So there's, there's quite a few loops to jump through. So we felt it would be a good idea to add some additional resource there. Similarly, as, as is the case with, yeah, with natural gas, gasoline for our vehicles. Um, is increasing and we didn't put too much more into that line item. And then finally, maintenance, we, we have a list of items that have been coming to us as maintenance requests. And they're already whittling in for that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars pretty significantly. So we felt like uh putting some additional funding there would be beneficial. Each of these, um, we feel is a, is a good investment in making sure that we're not taking the funds from. Instructional supplies and the things that, that we need to make sure that we, we commit to for our students and our teachers.
Yeah, thanks.
Thanks for that clarification. I appreciate the, the way that the allocation are happening because I've seen on, why can't I remember the name of that darn thing? Thought bubble.
Thought.
On thought exchanges, there's often been criticism about how we're not taking care of the stewards of the building. So I just appreciate that there's more. You know, we didn't just see the extra money and do something frivolous with it. They're reinvesting it. Yeah, so I think I just. I want our community to see and hear that you're being very smart with the extra money that we're receiving and, and I'm grateful to the leadership for that.
I just might piggyback on that. The teaching position, kind of named it, but um, you know, stay hatterly position where um. Through some move-ins and some expected other additional students, uh, we've made a clear commitment to keeping our class size as, as low as possible. And um, as you'll see tonight, tonight's segue into assistant superintendent, Driscoll's presentation, uh, we're very proud of where we are right now. Um, it, it's also back to the cause we said, we wanted to show the community that our promise last year about this time when parents were concerned. Was, was that we would look at that, um, class sizes, especially at the elementary, especially at this particular class, follow it through, some changes made. Um, very grateful, uh, we, Ms. Ward and I recently had a meeting with parents, that class, um, and teachers. So we've investigated this very thoroughly. We feel that uh adding a position there. In addition to the other two elementary positions, uh, classroom teachers, um, will bring us some really beneficial numbers as you'll see shortly. The class size, um, you know, adds with the five-point-eight new educated positions for next year. Very proud.
All right, thank you. So, um, I'll take a motion to amend one, and if you know.
I make a motion to amend and approve FY twenty-four budget in the amount of forty-nine million, three hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars. With revenue in the amount of forty-five million, five hundred and seven, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars from the town of Citrus. And three million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars. From grants and revolving accounts and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the town to the bus lease.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Dutch. Right, uh, leadership reports. We'll start with superintendent Burke.
Thank you. Um, first I'd like to start with, um, now that his position's official, the contract is uh official. I want to welcome, uh, Dr. Thomas Robb to the uh team as our new director of business and finance. Um, as I stated before, he, he uh comes highly recommended. He has a twenty-eight, twenty-nine year history, I guess. If I'm correct in that, almost thirty years in education at uh various levels, whether it being. Um, you know, as an educator at, at the ground floor and also as a principal, central office, business uh manager. Particularly for several years and superintendent experience. So um. His, his preferences of all people who I know and trust, uh, speak the world of him. And now that I've been able to meet him, I feel the same. The screening committee that interviewed him unanimously supported moving him forward. So I think we're in a real good place to um fill, fill some really big shoes, but I think I had a nice smooth handoff between two. Uh, bright, talented individuals would be a great thing for our district. Uh, so I wanted, uh, Dr. Rad to come up and just to meet the community tonight and just say hi and put a name to her face. So, Dr. Rad.
Thank you, Mr. Burke, for that very kind introduction. I can't believe it's been twenty-nine years. Next year will be thirty. It's incredible to cross over that decade. First, I really would like to thank the members of the screening committee. When I walked into the library here that day a few weeks ago. Um, I feel like I immediately connected with them. Their questions were part of my industry, part of what I've been doing throughout my whole career. Uh, thank Mr. Burke for the opportunity and most importantly, thank the committee for this opportunity. I'm very excited to start here. Um, when I was talking to my wife before I came in here, she said, now you have to say that you've done more than just been to the Mill Warf. So. I love Citrus. I've been telling you for quite some time. Oh, my daughter played basketball in high school about ten years ago and Citrus was certainly a rival to Hanover, my home community. And I've been to plenty of Hanover and Citrus hockey games that have gone both directions over the last ten years. So it's been, it's been a wonderful opportunity for me. You had me at hello. When I saw your budget online and the transparency of the budget documents. I was very, very quickly able to figure out exactly where Citrus is, what your priorities were from a budget, from a community standpoint. The collaboration excellence were clear through all of the documentation. And that really allowed me to very quickly know that I would be successful here. I'm excited to be here. So I'm thrilled to be here. I'm looking forward to the opportunity. I'm great to hear that there was additional revenue that was able to come on board. And, and I'm excited to start. So thank you very much.
Hey, thank you so much for coming tonight. Right. Superintendent Burke.
Great, um. I, you know, we had a couple of guests today and before I did that, I just want to thank the uh, the building, the school building committee. Um, you know, it's been a lady and it's been a mom and it's been on that. Uh, it's been a lot of nights, a lot of hours and there's a lot to go. Uh, but it's getting to the really exciting point of, of starting to put the pieces together, working with visioning teams, working with our stakeholders, listening to the feedback. And just an invitation for all those out there, that we do have another public meeting, our second one this Wednesday evening at six-thirty, uh, in the Gates Commons. A school built architecturally by Doran Widdier and um. We have it tonight. So I do want to introduce right now for a, a brief update and presentation on where we're at for the committee, for the community. Uh, Don Walter, who's the principal of Doran Widdier Architects, and John Lemieux, the executive vice president of construction at Burke.
Just plug into this right here, is that okay?
Um, yeah, it should be if the HMI people is there.
Mm-hmm.
Yep. You email that to me, I'll share.
Oh, sure. People at home might not get that on that TV.
I was giving good jobs. We're waiting for you. I hope I said that. All right, so good evening, everybody. Um, we are very happy to be here and give you an update. Let's go to a project as Bill said, it's, you know, there's been a lot of work we've gone into it so far, but we are really still just at the beginning. So tonight we're going to talk a little bit about introductions, um, then uh kind of the process and the sketch, you know, immediate schedule. Look at some of the high-level findings from the visioning work that's gone on. Talk a little bit about the preliminary design options and then what's next, uh, feedback and next steps. By way of introductions, you know, um, we feel really lucky. I feel really lucky to be back in Citrus. Um, we've worked as your own project manager on a number of projects now. We worked on your public safety building. We also worked in the senior center. A couple of projects we're very, very proud to have participated in. Also in this process, obviously with the town, your, your partner, the National Building Authority, you know, they would be providing a certain amount of funding for the project. You know, how much, we'll find out as we, you know, walk down the road and let Don introduce himself.
Hello, uh, I'm Don Walter. Uh, Bill mentioned Principal Doran Widdier and uh, like John, we're both social people. We play the culture that that's one of the Citrus residents. So I'm really happy to be back here. Uh, we did do the, the kids middle school that we're extremely proud of and we had the pleasure of doing the public safety building, you know, through John. So, um, yeah, we're going to think through, look at the, the schedule, the process and give you a peek at what we're going to keep showing them.
Yeah, I, I think ultimately just one more note about the, the MSDA. At the end of the day, you know, they are the town's partner. And the goal is finding, the miracle is to find the most educationally appropriate, flexible, sustainable and cost-effective solution. You know, for Citrus's needs. And as of right now, it looks like a paid fund, which is about fifty-seven percent of eligible costs. And we'll get into what an eligible cost is later. It's not fifty-seven percent of the whole project, fifty-seven percent of eligible cost. But we'll be back at a future meetings to talk more about that. But just a little bit about the process and the schedule before I uh turn it over to Don. You know, when you talk about doing a project with the MSDA, it's really for a project of this type, what a five-year relationship. You know, the, the first year is about this, um, you know, kind of getting ready to get into it. The second year is about the study itself. The third year is about design. The fourth and fifth year are actually about the, the construction of the project. So right now we are in this inside the red dotted circle here and ultimately we'd be looking to get. You know, to the, you know, through, through this schematic design with the town for a spring of twenty-four, about, and that's, you know, a year from now going to the town and saying. Here's a solution that we've brought already. Here's what it's going to cost. Here's what we need to go through dollars. And with a successful um town meeting and likely valid vote as well, then begins, you know, basically the rest of the project. You know, the, the next year of design, then actually building. Turn it over to Don now to talk a little bit about, you know, what, what is the project.
Correct. Probably all know, but the people who don't, you might be watching MTV, um, working through the, with the MSBA. I know that, um, we had the statements of interest submitted for both the Haddaway and the, in the Christian school and Haddaway was selected. But uh, what's nice about it, they will select it as a consolidation occurring. So you can see here, uh, we agreed upon a role that's one of its contingent for a K-five uh population. But we've also been asked to look at a pre-kindergarten population for approximately a hundred students. So that can be part of the study also. And what's, what's important to know about that while that's not part of the agreement for sixty, MSBA typically doesn't reverse for those spaces. They recognize the. And what's important to know about that, while that's not part of the agreement for sixty, MSBA typically doesn't reimburse for those spaces, they recognize the needs of the community. So we would expect that to be, to be reimbursable spaces within the program. And then, even though it said Haddery site, because it's a consolidation, we're looking at design options on both sites. So that's what we started doing. So we went through the existing buildings in the site, our seven of the architects, and numerous engineers, civil, structural, mechanical, architectural, plumbing, fire protection, kitchen consultant, hazardous materials consultant, landscape architects, a pretty robust team, went through these existing buildings, and no surprise, they're all, they're well taken care of, but they're outdated. There can be major renovations, or replacement, or addition to renovation. So, just some of the highlights, the spatial deficiencies, as you can imagine, there are plenty of those throughout, and where do the classes start to attention. In particular, and then some of the spatial deficiencies, the gymnasium location, and the classrooms basically rounded, and how it just does not work, you know, design's always that way anymore. And looking at the systems, they're all, they're outdated, in need of replacement, so includes the electrical plumbing, there is no fire protection, we require nothing we're putting there today, but anything we build needed for house maintenance. So that wasn't part of the new thing that we do. We noted that because of spatial issues, space issues, there are modular classrooms on your building, and the student that you have there is the prime candidate, although the buildings are running back and forth. The way we try to gauge the needs of the buildings from an existing condition assessment, you can see the chart we've got up here, the consumer reports approach that we take, it's excellent, meaning clear circle, four of them in the dark circle, running again. If everything were excellent, it'd be sixty points, I think. You can see there are twenty-four points for Haddery, twenty-six points for Cushing, they're not performing too well on the consumer report index, but the primary issues as it relates to the existing condition, with that mechanical system, with plumbing, the electrical, and a lack of fire protection. So, but it is important to note, there are no safety issues in the building from structural perspective, even though it has its materials that are encapsulated, have been completed, and a part of it is the weather. So what we are going to look at to meet the MSBA requirements are a number of different options. And then going from left to right, you can see, we're going to look at the Haddery school and just see what repairs are needed to keep the building functional, right? What we call the repair on the option does not address any of the spatial issues, does not address any of the academic or problematic issues. So it becomes a baseline for cost. Ultimately, what will probably happen, if we go into funding a renovation program, we'll find that those repairs and those costs will not meet the MSBA requirements, they don't meet yours. So you'll find that probably those costs didn't get reimbursed, and you compare that to all the other additional renovations and new costs, and that are reimbursed, they get very close to you. So ultimately, because of what is lacking there from a plumbing perspective on repair, that you would move away from that quite quickly. So the other options that we'll be looking at, at both Haddery and Cushing, we'll be looking at addition renovation options, seeing what the space we can, what new space would be added on Haddery and Cushing, and then new options on those sites for the four sixty, and then, John, probably is what we're going to be doing, like I said, less than kindergarten, we'll be improving our options, are addition renovations in the, on both sites for the four sixty, for the under fifteen ones. So, and this is some of the criteria that we developed, we're going to continue to develop evaluation criteria, there's a learning group, the school building committee, and anything that we figured we had to add. We basically establish criteria, and we weigh the criteria, working together with you, develop the plan system. For some of the questions that we ask, they'll be decide what options were best for the, for the community, or yeah, to support the educational goals of the school, what's the least disruptive during construction, if you can imagine, if you can build a new building adjacent to it, and keep the students in that existing building, that's a lot less disruptive, and if you do additions or renovations, it's like the students all around, and move them up to modular, and it's on-site, all kinds of concerns, and cost, cost is tied to that, those movements that need to be placed. In terms of location on the site, trying to be a good neighbor, trying to be present beside the building, all right, and will be a two-story structure, so you want to fit in, within the neighborhood, touch, be set back, with the street, be set back, and make the back, keep the yards. Community use, hugely important, not just space around the building in terms of fields or activity space, but within the building. Setting the building up in such a way as you can use the building after hours, say, for the gymnasium, the dining room, the library, and maybe part of the music, but any of them will shut the rest of the building down, so you're just operating a portion of the things in the next couple of things, after hours. The impact on blessing in transportation, take that into consideration, and then at the end, the cost versus the value added, and again, to reimburse the potential, and whatever you do here, so we'll be looking at not just the construction cost, but the project cost, which actually include our cost, their cost, the cost of continuously, the cost of furnitures and equipment, the cost of escalation, and we're going to try to change anything in the construction over the last few years, here, it costs a lot more, so making sure that we keep up the data and that, because when, ultimately, the town votes on this, we'll be at a schematic design level. So we won't have fully cooked it on, because it'll be at an earlier stage, further than what you'd be tonight, but we have to make sure it covers those costs, because that's what you will enhance the, the economy by yourself. So, really important aspect of our work, not just looking at the existing building and the needs of it, employing the building with the principals, that is, to sit down with, with, you know, the school committee, with administrators, with teachers, with parents, with students, and really help secrete course for what this project is going to be. So we sat down and done three vision sessions with anywhere from twenty-five to thirty people, depending on the afternoon, and a lot of thought, and both in the discussions, right, and we showed a lot of projects, either projects that we've done, projects that we've done throughout the state, projects that we've done throughout the world, give you a sense of what, what could happen beyond Citrus. And what I think really was most important, we started with that two thousand and nineteen vision study, so, so we went through, we dive ourselves on that, on that work that we're doing with Dr. Walker, and brought a lot of information back to see how it, how it just didn't touch the pie, and four years, and it looks at it very well. So a lot of that is getting realized, so a lot of good work we've done there that's been carried forward into the work that's emerging now. So, and part of this work also was to look at, you see some of the diagram, diagrams down below, in some of the stuff, all these images that people went around, we put green dots, yellow dot, red dot, green was really good, red, maybe not so green, yellow was okay, it's okay, but something different to it. But more fun than that, where we put together table groups, and basically gave pieces of program, you see it from the top right, to develop special relationships and diagrams for what a building fit with one, and what came out of there, out of most of these statements, I think. You saw a lot of the four facilities, as you might imagine, in the center, next to the main entrance, and then in the administration, your library, your dining room, your gymnasium, and the academics being pushed, pushed out to the sides, so students to come be around from outside, even inside out. Do you remember those travel lessons? Do you keep in mind some of the little feet there out there with, with Pre-K and kindergarten, and the first graders? So a lot of great work wasn't done there. And then some of the, some of the statements that came out of that work, we used the melanote to do a lot of real-time dialogue, to get some feedback from the people in the room, that you can see some of the statements that come up, that came up, like the inclusive pathway to school, with children, they can grow together. The next one was on the students, about this, I got the most of these, but partially, we got it. Fun learning, space variety, space size variety, outdoor activities in school, school commons, so, I think what's probably most important is fun learning, where the kids enter, wanting to have fun at school. We have here bringing community together, the highest student experience moving about Citrus's history, and here we are again, doing, doing, we want to address the student journey, to feel like you want a sense of wonder and purpose. Sounds like my thing. So, really, a lot of, a lot of information. So we take all this information, there's a lot more than what you're seeing tonight, we take all this information, we spill it, we actually put together an educational program that is in an MSBA format, but essentially becomes a list of all the spaces that will be in the building, from classrooms to administration, art, and using the special education, haven't talked about that much tonight. Big special education program, that you want to make sure that we make, and you spill that down, you build in your circulation space, where we all can take that, and you end up with about a hundred thousand square meters. So that's, that's what we're working with right now, and we'll be going back and forth, ultimately deciding what's in the program, what decided the building will be, how it's going to be laid out. But tonight, just going to give you a sense of what we've been doing, we're not going to get into the diagrams of what's in, in the buildings themselves, because we'll be here a long time, but just give you a sense of how things are sitting on each site, and just looking at a couple of new options here tonight, not giving you the initial variation. So the first site we want to look at is the Haddery site, and Vinyl Road, it was down the bottom, bottom left, the dashed line that you see is the existing Haddery school outline. So what we're showing here is a two-story option, we call it the C option, but it's being built adjacent to the existing building. You can see a large part of it is non-planary field, which in every case, we're going to work on that, we're making sure that we're replacing that field. So two-story building, four facilities in the middle, the wings that can see going out of this, are the classroom wings, in this case, we work hard to separate buses from parents, to drop off, and we've got, we see actors on the way along the building. So, that's the C option on the Haddery site, we have what we call the bar option, it's a personal favor, not an influence anyone, but what's, what's nice about we think about this option, it's a first playback, because we have to get it to the barn, that's in the back, to get you off of, off of the vinyl, gives you more seating space for cars, it's going to, it gets them off the street, we're working on it. Again, keeping the buses, we do that, separate, planer's field, so you can build a blue, but keep in mind that whatever we do in here, for construction, never is chosen because of the, where the site is divided out, the field, planer's field would be out of commission during construction, because in the United States, it's a contract, it's a part of this. The other thing, just to point out, all the options were separating the youngest teams from the older teams, so we're going to, they're sitting in round two, and two for five, or kind of do the same groupings. So those are the two, the Haddery site, and then Cushing site, the upper right corner, you see that little gray, pale, that's Aberdeen, coming in from the neighborhood up at the top. The existing Cushing buildings on the left, down the bottom, is the ski build that takes you down towards the high school fields, and where the, you see that gray road kind of running in on the bottom, that's a possible location that is just a path. Okay, that comes through from Aberdeen to the high school. This is that same C option, what's, what's different here is because all those fine lines that you see going from, from left, left to right, those are, those are grades, so if you're actually that, that doesn't cut the soap away. So we'd be working with the grades to set this building up, I think, really set it right down, this is what it was. With this particular, this particular site, how do you?
Can I interrupt for a second? Sorry, I'm getting texts that people on Zoom can't hear you, maybe you can move the mic just a little bit closer to you, so they're, they're just very interested in this, so, thank you.
I'm afraid I'm a little stunned. Sorry about that. So, as you can imagine, where, say, in Vinyl is more than you can immediately feel, it goes from, from one place to another, Aberdeen is better. So, and we looked at what is, where we can possibly get, you know, access to this building, we just don't see it right now, you know, if you're going to start buying properties, which I don't think we're really interested in doing. So, this, this is the one new option that we looked at for Oh, yes, thank you. In the bar does not fit. We looked at, I should get across the back of the existing Cushing, but again, as you can imagine, where the gray drops, it would extend from the gray road on the right, all the way past the green that you see up on the left, it probably looked kind of cool down below, but not really that cool.
So, what's next, next steps? So as you can see right now, we are in the, as Don alluded to, we're in the preliminary design program, okay, so we talk about, you know, the MSBA has us look at all of those options that were illustrated on one of those first slides, we added the Breno both sites, four sixty, five sixty, all of that. As we go through this PDP process, we acknowledge all of those options, they all go in this report, but we're funneling them down into a select few. And the whole point of this step-down process, the first bar is the many, the middle bar is the few, the bottom bar is the one, what's the final decision, okay? So by the end of the PDP, we'll have a shortlist. In the PSR, the next report, we'll make that shortlist get down to one, submit that one to the MSBA, and then they say, okay, move ahead with schematic design. And then what Donna and firm do is basically do a design that takes that, actually starts designing the building, gets it to about twenty, twenty-five percent. The MSBA's schematic design by definition is more involved than most schematic designs you see on other projects. And it's that design that we estimate, he does an estimate, we do an estimate, and we come up with that total project budget, including all the things that if you pick up the building and shook it, and fall out of the building, technology, furniture, all those things, and that's the number that we, we look, same way you did the Gates project a few years ago, you know, you went to the MSBA, do the number, they acknowledged it, town voted it, and then live by that, live by that budget, move it forward through the remainder of design, and then move ahead. But back to the PDP that we're in right now, as you see, we have a public meeting coming up this week, we're going to get our, we're going to get, start to submit our information to the cost estimators, so that we can put rough numbers to these different, these different options, not so much to get the number, but so that you can understand kind of the relative differences between the options. We'll have another public meeting in May, and then we'll submit that PDP to the MSBA at the end of May. A big part of the PDP is also the educational plan that Burkett will be putting together. You as a school committee will need to approve that end plan that gets incorporated into the PDP, that'll be at a subsequent meeting, and then we'll submit that. When we get to the PSR, we'll also need your endorsement of the PSR as well, because that's coming down to the option, and where are we putting, you know, are we putting it on Haddery, are we putting it on Cushing? And there's, the school committee involved is key, you put that decision as well. With that, that's all we have, we have, I'm going to take any questions if you have them.
Right, thank you so much, that information, much appreciated, if anyone has questions.
First of all, thank you so much for this. I feel like, even though, I'll admit this, I'm a member of the school committee, I didn't recognize the amount of work that's gone on so far to get to this point, so I appreciate, this is a very timely and informative update. And I recognize you probably don't need more questions or more Um, and I recognize you probably don't need more questions or more comments at this point, although, although it still isn't a public comment period. I have a couple that I just, not being part of the committee, that's. Been working so far to come up here, um, I have a couple of questions, uh, the first one you mentioned. And I'm glad that we're doing this, we're looking at potential, the cost of repair or renovate. Um, can you explain a little bit more clearly, if we decide that we do want to do that, is there no reimbursement or just a much smaller portion of potential repair?
If. That would happen, if, if you determine that the repair only does not meet your needs as a community. The programmatic needs, we're spending, uh, because the building by time you see it bigger. Then, uh, we have not seen where the MSBA would participate in just fixing the building. So that's why, we get to see that.
Okay, uh, sorry, I have a couple more, um. Yes.
So, um, to be clear, the MSBA approved, um, the replacement, not the renovation?
There's a difference between repair and renovation, so repair is just fixed, right?
They have not.
Basically making it like, it's not that they haven't approved that. It is, we went through this process, and how did it came, geez, all we need to do is fix the building, because we, we're meeting all our educational program needs, we're meeting all of our space needs. And MSBA would consider that as a reimbursement of the project. Right now, based on this program that we developed, and knowing what the spatial needs are, we don't see that happen. Right, but we need to carry that option throughout, because it becomes your baseline, that you're carrying. Uh, a renovation, again, not enough space in the distant building in straight renovation, sometimes we run into a district where there's a building that's just swimming its space. And you can go in there and, and basically renovate the building, create enough space for your, your current and future needs, and that's, that'll work. In this case, it would be renovation and addition. We're already working on this option, so, uh, the renovation and new construction, that's part of that, and of course, third option is, uh, you all knew, on, on the options.
Thank you.
Because reasonably, it would have to be a renovator and repair both, though, correct? I know the SOI was probably one of, I know that they would be competitive to that, but. I, oh no, now that's, now that's an excellent point, too, the MSBA approved a project with an enrollment of four, six, right? So that's another signal to, if you just gave them an option where you were going to say. Repairing both, Donna's point is probably, you know, not going to be viewed as a realistic option, that supports the educational needs, but it's, and that's, that's the other part, you have to remember. Big part of this next submission is the end plan, how do you deliver education in situ? And does the building, does the building solution fit that? The answer, I pretty much have to be yes, both those things work together.
It, it is a consolidation. So that, that, that's what we, the order we follow.
Right, okay, thank you, a couple more, um. Point of, I pay attention to a lot of what goes on in town, I know that there is, uh, circ regulations about conservation and, and, uh, building close to wetlands. When we evaluate these two sites, do we have those notices in place that we can or can't build on those particular sites that those locations?
But we, we, we don't have wetlands delineation done per se, but we do have information through the MSPIAS, National Towns PIS system. So we know where the wetlands are, and we know where the buffers are, we work within the set factors zone and whatnot. Uh, we do some additional soils analysis, we're going to send them what the structural capacity, like, uh, the existing soil, or if there are soils that are, are not good, that need to be moved in place. Or you can do some soil improvements, all that will be done in preliminary nature as part of the study.
Okay, because the state doesn't want to embark a project that gets the, that gets road blocked, they're going to be starting to check those, they're going to watch that balance. That's my concern, I know that. I know the area around how, I know there is some wetlands back, but I'm not sure exactly where it is, so I just want, if, if we go with that, that question, I don't know the Cushing site, uh, closely, but I'm sure there's.
There, 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 the Cushing, uh, environmental. I don't know, opportunities are a little, little more. Probably than they are.
All right, thank you, a couple more, um, ECC, Phil, is our current ECC just about a hundred, is that what it is? A hundred seconds?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so this potential addition to this project would just be for our existing enrollment? Okay. Okay.
It's actually, yeah, we're actually expanding a little bit, okay, trying to include, the number we're using is the number of students you've had over the last few years, plus the waiting list.
Okay, all right, great. Bye, bye. Okay, um, and then, last one, this is probably just more particular to me, because I know what happened with the old school. Our budget didn't include demolition of the old school, so in this project. Um, is there a point in the process where we can include, if we decide to build a new school at the Hattaway site? Do we or when do we include possible costs to demolish Hattaway and Cushing? We don't want to have two extra buildings. So wherever you, wherever the decision is made to build it, that one has to come back. Well, that would be part of that. That would be part, and, and if, and if it. You know, there's no reason it can't, it can't be the demo, or the other can't be in here as well. But the decision has to be made, are we keeping it or not? If you decide later, uh, we should have had demo, let's say, if that happened, we should have had that on the cushion in the project. But after, once the budget is set, and agreed to a scope and budget with the state. So it doesn't mean you can't do it if you have the money later, but you lose the opportunity for reimbursement or consideration of reimbursement of those funds as part of the grant. Is, does demolition, would you think in your opinion that the demolition, in that situation, that Cushing might be reimbursable to some degree? We'd have to ask, but yeah, if it's part of a scope, I mean, they know it's a consolidation, right? Yeah, so if, if, if the whole plan is to bring two to one site, get rid of two existing, yeah, I mean, but that would be, we would want to include that kind of in that ESR, that next stage. How can I, if that hasn't been brought up yet, how can you be sure to discuss that, because I just, I don't, I. As much as I support this project and want to go through, I just, I, I think that we need to coordinate with town, say, hey, if we move forward with this. We need to have a plan for the old school that we're not utilizing anymore, do we want to demolish it, or do we want to keep it? I don't know why we want to keep a school, another school vacant. Yeah, you can't reuse it for some other purpose without bringing it up the code, so I just want to make sure that somewhere in this process, we're discussing, and maybe we have to coordinate with the town. Make sure that they have a plan for what they want to do if we were to have that school as their part. Does that make sense? Great question.
Absolutely. And we can, we can certainly include those demolition costs, they're below the line.
Yes.
Just so you know.
Yeah, I think, I think that will be helpful, because we gotta, sometimes we don't think of those things, and then we're left with another, something else that we have to then wait another five years to figure out. I have no idea how much it costs to demolish a school, a million or two million, I have no idea. You, you, you need to obey all the. That happens at first, and then. Yeah, I think that's all I have, but again, this is great, I. I didn't realize how much work was going on over the last couple of months, because I have not been involved in that at all, so I appreciate it. I know, I appreciate all the effort, this was very helpful to me, and I'm going to try to go Wednesday, just. Good to be here, thank you. Welcome, welcome.
All right. I know. Really, I think, Gary, thank you for the question. All right, thank you to Don and John for joining us tonight. Welcome, one, one, one for the Wednesday at six thirty, and the Dave Standing partners to hear more and ask more questions, especially if we had some audio concerns. You know, you can always email me or pretend to Burkett at any time, it's, uh, open. We want feedback and inclusion and all of it, so email away, please. Now is the time. Right, let's move forward to Assistant Superintendent Driscoll's report.
Uh, well, thank you for having me, um, I have, uh, our FY twenty-four class size overview that I'd like to share with everybody. Um, if you have questions, I'm willing, feel free to jump in. I want to emphasize that a class size for a public school system is always determined by who lives in our town. We may have students coming, we may have students coming, so this is a living and breathing number that changes. Um. Due to things we can predict typically. So as we're sharing the tentative class sizes, um, if someone knows of, oh, there's somebody who will be in next week, they will be, they'll be not accounting for it. Um, we've also, we have accounted though for our next one number of, um, new enrollment from Netco, um, because we just sent our letters out, our review sentences. Um, so those are included in this. Questions for person? Okay, the first thing that I'm sharing is the timeline for decision review. I think that, um, sometimes actually like a building project, we don't always, um, take into account how long the planning processes for, um, school projects. So this is a very, very short summary of the timeline for decision review. Um, in the fall, we look at the enrollment submission, it's on the October first report for people who have to do data first. We look at that submission to, to the department event, and our business manager uses that to drive the numbers for planning. The reason why we have to lock in on these October one numbers is because our planning numbers. The official numbers that go into all of that work can't change every other week because it's a dominant effect. Um, over the winter, in, in spring, we have our budget proposals, at that time, we make some adjustments. And, um, we look for approvals, which we're in the process of right now. Even after the final budget is approved, throughout the summer and throughout the year, we always have to examine the educational needs. We ensure that we're both educationally and physically responsible as per planning. So as you saw last year, we had to add an additional kindergarten teacher, um, because of some, uh, bump in enrollment at the end of the summer. Um, and things, uh, we, we have to make sure that we're flexible, um, uh, with me. These are the tentative average class sizes for FY twenty-four. Um, Sichuan High School, the average class size is eighteen. In eight, the average class size is twenty-two. In Cushing, nineteen, Hattaway, nineteen, Jenkins, eighteen, and Wongbita, eighteen. That is the general class size for each of our school buildings. Questions about that, person? So something else that I shared out here is the tentative lowest and highest class size for FY fourteen, and I want to emphasize, this is tentative. Um, so if you look at the difference, um, the lowest class size in two of the buildings is sixteen. But in Jenkins and Wongbita, it'd be a fourteen and twelve. Right now, our kindergarten registration does not look, um, as similar as it has in the past for Wongbita. Please tell all your friends and neighbors, we would love to register their kindergarteners that they exist, please come to register. Because we need to make sure we're planning as soon, um, as possible, if we don't have the registrations, we can't. Looks like, um, everyone got the message in Cushing and Hattaway here. Um, so that's very helpful. Um, and the largest class size, the tentative highest class size. Uh, for each building is twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-one, and twenty-two, um, with the help of the additional, um, teachers that were at, um, at. Questions about that?
Uh, hi, when is? When does, uh, or when did kindergarten registration open?
Um, it opened in February, and so other, some people have been asking me, when does it close? I would love to give a pause, a pause date, so we can feel a sense of urgency, but the truth is, when somebody was in the, their registration, it's a false reply. Um, if you'd like to start a rumor that the due date was yesterday, I'm appreciating it, John, uh, but that's, uh, that's.
That's well, obviously, if the kindergarten.
Yes, yes, yeah.
It might be coming on a feature slides, I'd just say, can you give us a sense of how this compares? Either to what the research says, or what's going on in other districts in Massachusetts?
Oh, I can tell you.
Awesome.
We are looking awesome.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I thought.
Yeah, um, yeah. Um, not only do we look awesome in our actual class sizes, but our special education didn't, these loads, I almost felt wrong before, when I came to this district and saw the amazing. Um, size that we have, we can give our kids so much attention, I'm having a psychologist that I'm noting, plus an adjustment counselor, I lose. We have a wonderful status student ratio at Rob, but this is looking just at the actual core class sizes.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and I broke it out a little bit more, um, so you can see the average class size by grade level. We try to prioritize the, um, lower elementary, of course. Um, but this is the breakout for the general, uh, elementary, and right now, our kindergarten class size is the lowest average for the district, but. Um, when we look, uh, the breakouts by school are, have a huge, uh, variety right now. Um, it's something that Bill and I are asked many times when it comes to class size, why can't they be more? Um, they're not even because we have neighborhood schools, I mean, that's, we don't put everybody in a certain grade in one school and divide equally. Um, we have neighborhood school services to where they're great self. Um, and here's some key takeaways. Um, the first thing is timeline, the planning process for classes, it begins nearly a year before the kids even look through the doors. Um, both current and future class size and student needs are examined throughout the year. Um, so right now, we're looking at our current class size plus next year's always. Um, staffing, our student teacher ratio is technically eleven point nine four, and it's one of the lowest, um, on the South Shore, um, and that includes all of the adults who service. Um, support services, which I actually just mentioned with Barry's question, those are services outside of core instruction, and the average class sizes. Included the core instruction, so that means if you get a small group service, that is not, um, those people still do have three, sort of, sort of, for support services. Um, and the high school and middle school, their course selection process, the electives that exist in course, the core courses in that class size. So when I needed the average class size, it was, um, an average using sections. So it wasn't by grade level, there's just hundreds of high school, of different sections. Um, and those are, there's a wide variety of that. And that's driven by, um, what kids are going to do. And that is, you have any questions, or is this something I can?
Those long-term going into this, my teacher and having to.
Yes, yes, somebody told me about that before.
Yeah, I'm sure. Question or? System superintendent, no, thank you.
Okay.
Hey, Dr. Bober, Director of Special Education Report. Thanks for having me, thank you, Assistant Superintendent Driscoll. Um, so tonight, I'm going to do a special education update with a focus on finances, so mostly, um, grants, uh, district, and circuit breaker. So when we talk about special education budgets, obviously, we start with students first. Um, we think about, um, our student needs, just like, uh, Assistant Superintendent Driscoll talked about, you know, kind of like, looking forward to next year, we think about, um, next year's students. Their needs, where they're at in terms of, uh, district programs, we think about the grants that we may be getting to support, um. Uh, uh, our costs, and then there's a couple other technical things, I just wanted to address briefly such as. And then there's a couple other technical things I just wanted to address briefly, such as maintenance of caper, proportion of share, and then circuit breaker, which I believe as well, the school committee was interested in. Stay tuned to be in. So special education students, so at the, in the beginning of August, when I did the grant, we, we had five hundred forty-two students on IP's coded at that time. That is a bit of a jump from the previous year when we had four hundred ninety-eight students. I think that the increase is due to a variety of factors, but certainly, you know, the pandemic has not helped us in that regard. When I sit down to do the grants that we get from the state, I have to look at the numbers of students that are homeschooled or students that are placed in private schools by their parents, and we'll talk about that under proportion of share. And obviously, looking at students that are placed in district schools that are funded by the Situate School District. So in the spring of twenty twenty-two, we had forty. In August, we had thirty-seven, and at this point, we have about thirty-three. So in March, you can see there's a slight decline over students that mostly having to do with students aging out of the system, because we couldn't provide services for students up until age twenty-two or students graduating or moving, et cetera. And in March, we, of the students that are homeschooled, friends were placed in Situate. We also have eleven students that are placed outside of Situate, including two from out of state. But I do have to keep data on all these students, because it is important when it's time for the. So, and stop me if there's any questions. Yeah.
When you say that they're placed by parents, you mean they, they, it wasn't a recommendation by us? Is they chose that?
Right. So in-ly school, so we have students that parents pay to go to in-ly school. And parents still have the right to ask for special education evaluations, and their students can be put on IP's. But we're not funding the tuition at in-ly school. Right. We may be funding some specialized, but so, personally placed are like B C High School. You know, some schools.
So we still support them if they need it.
Well, we, we evaluate them to determine their eligibility, and that's sort of maintained for up to three years. And then if they're, you know, it's just difficult, because if they're at a school, you know, Boston.
So you would make, you would send that to that school?
We involve the school in the, in the meetings we meet every, every year. There might be some remote services that we can do. And then when I get to proportion share, we talk about what we do for in-ly school, because that's a little bit easier for just to, like, keep that they're around the ball. So we look at the bottom of this chart for out of district from in the school year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty. At that time, we had about forty-three students out of district, and the cost was almost three point five million dollars. At that time, we looked at claiming transportation on a circuit breaker. And you could see the amount that was attempted to be claimed was four hundred thirty-eight thousand nine hundred ninety-four dollars. That was not funded. I think the state was doing a little experiment to see how much districts were going to claim. But that gives you a sense of some of the costs that we had in, in that year. And then in twenty twenty, the number dropped significantly. The amount of cost though did rise. And at that time, we did get some transportation money back from circuit breaker, which again, will be done at the end. And then you can see that number pretty much fairly stable from twenty twenty, projected through next year. And the amount that we spend on out of district tuitions is relatively stable, even with the anticipated fourteen percent increase in the private schools next year because of just the way that it's worked out with the number of students and where they're going. So we, you know, we never know, it's just like Mr. Driscoll explained, you know, it's just a snapshot. You know about certain students, we don't know what students may move in. We don't know what students may change their placements, but it's a conservative estimate of what, of where we're at. Any questions? And we, we have students all over, you know, the state, and we've had students in the past in like Connecticut that are in approved special education schools. So some schools specialize in autism, others specialize in emotional, you know, impairments. And, you know, we, we do try to make sure that we have appropriate services for all our students. And when they're, these are two incentives that they need a specialized program, that's where these programs are very, very helpful. Any questions?
Yeah, I have a quick question on the transportation, just more understanding. Did the state just allow potential reimbursement for transportation? Is that accurate? And they're trying to figure out what the formula is and how much is eligible?
Well, we, we, they allowed it back in, I believe, twenty, you know, twenty twenty-one. So we got, we've been getting it through the circuit breaker, a small amount. If, I had, we had to claim it in twenty nineteen, but we didn't get any money.
But they're still trying to figure out the formula, I think, or in terms of the reimbursement rate? Is that kind of what they're doing?
Yes, and I'll talk about it a little bit more, but it's, since I've got a special director, it's ranged from sixty-nine percent to seventy-five percent. But it has to meet like a threshold amount.
No, but for the transportation, isn't that a newly eligible?
I believe they're still looking at the seventy-five percent, but I don't know. It varies every year, depending how much money they have. Because there's only one pot of money. So now they've added transportation to the tuitions, but they haven't really increased that money unless they are.
Thank you.
Okay, so for, for grants, so one of the requirements is to address any significant disproportionality. Remember that the equity audit, they talked a little bit about that. We were found to be significantly disproportionate and over identified black students in the area with communication disabilities in the fall of twenty twenty. But it didn't make the grant until the following year, so I had to reserve fifteen percent of the grant for what is called coordinate, comprehensive coordinator, early intervening services for students before they get to the point of being in special education. So we had to basically put aside fifteen percent for that one year. The following year, we were not disproportionate, so we did address some of those issues. But that's one piece of the grant that we have to do for the federal grants. The other requirement is if we're putting any salaried professional staff, such as therapists or teachers, we have to include the F T R S rates, or it's like adding on an extra eleven percent of their salary. So I try not to put a lot of teachers in the grant, because we're losing that quota when they return it. We do have to include Medicare for whatever staff, which is a small amount. The other big concept are maintenance of effort and proportion of share, which I will explain on the next slide. So maintenance of effort, basically, that is designed to make sure that school districts are spending adequate funds on special education, because state does not want any school to start cutting special education about its budget. So the formula is that they compare what amount is budgeted for the upcoming school year with a comparison of what was spent two years before. And they look at it both on a per people basis, as well as a whole on an aggregate basis. So our curve, when I did this grant in the last summer, the per people expenditures decreased slightly, but overall, the budget increased because of the number of students in special education. So at that point, it did exceed that amount. If you were okay with the maintenance of efforts. Proportionate share means that for our federal grants, we have to take the proportion of the grant for our students and like save a proportion for students in the private schools and in, for, for students that are being homeschooled that are on IP's. So we also have to, there's a piece of it that they'll look at the students that attend in-ly school, which is our private school in Situate. So even students that don't live in Situate and also students that are getting homeschooled. So one of the things that I have to do is I consult with the private school three times a year. So I made a third one today, and we talked about, okay, this is how much you get. This past year is about fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. And we talked about how we want to spend the money. So we, we bought some supplies for counseling and OT. And then we're working on how to also provide the services there. For our students that are homeschooled, a lot of times the parents bring their students into the, the neighborhood school for their, their services. And so we also use a piece of the grant for salaries that way. We're not allowed to fund evaluations, it's just for services and supplies for students that write these. Okay. So moving along, so I mentioned these grants. So these are what I call entitled grants, because by virtue of being public school, we are entitled to the grants. They set the money. Our grant this past year went down by about forty thousand compared to the previous year. A couple weeks ago, they were like, oh, good news, we have three thousand dollars more, but you have to annul the grant in a week. So we, including that, we, we got seven hundred nine thousand eight hundred sixty-five under the, the big grant, the I D E A grant. Like I mentioned, we had to use about two percent of that for the proportion of share for the private school students. And then how I use the grant is, you know, funded three paraprofessional salaries, funded training, funded partial salaries of our assist, which are specialized instructional support personnel, so our speech therapists, OTs, those staff that are doing the therapy for students from schools. We also use some money for independent evaluations, supplies, et cetera. And then a big portion of that is used to offset the out of district tuitions, as well as transportation. There's also a smaller grant, and that is the two sixty-two early childhood grant. We use that to fund one part of the question and supplies for. And then, okay, the, the one you could have made, circuit breaker reimbursement. So circuit breaker is like an electrical safety device that protects the electrical circuit from damage, you know, caused by overuse of overcurrent. So Dessie has basically developed this reimbursement program to kind of like stop, you know, if, if, if we're getting overloaded with expensive special education. And in Situate, we've been able to obtain the money, but not have to use it in the current budget, so that you can budget it for the following year. So it works this way. So first of all, the state says, okay, we're taking four times the foundation budget amount, and we're expecting you're going to spend that on your students in special education. So four times the foundation amount this current year, it's forty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. If the student's tuition costs hundred thousand, they just subtract that amount, and then we get the remainder, about fifty thousand, and then any year, it could be sixty-nine percent, it could be seventy percent, it could be seventy-five percent. We would get, you're told we're going to get seventy-five percent. So then, even though we spent a hundred thousand, we might get back thirty-seven thousand eight hundred seventy-nine dollars. They do have other special kind of things, if it's a student who is considered homeless or is a word of the state, then we get a hundred percent, not seventy-five percent. As we discussed, we can claim for transportation, we can also claim for in-district services. So it's a little bit different formula, but basically, we count out the hours per week based on the IP, which sometimes changes three, four times a year. And then figure out the amount that Dessie says that person's hourly rate would be. So special education teacher, one to one paraprofessional therapist, et cetera. And then we're, when we work on this file, so I'm working on it right now for extraordinary relief. But we're working on this year, you won't know until the fall what we get, and then we typically spend that money in the following year. Questions?
Okay, sure.
It might be that it's getting late, so I'm sorry. Can I see the previous slide? Is that okay? Okay, so it's, and I'm, I'm really sorry if this is simple and I'm just not following. Student's tuition is a hundred K.
Yeah.
And then, can you explain, so the, you subtract forty-nine thousand?
Yeah.
And it gets down to fifty K, and we only get seventy-five percent reimbursement for the fifty K.
Right.
So we're only getting thirty-seven thousand. So I don't, the part I don't understand is the four times foundation part.
I think because the state assumes, like, the foundation amount is like twelve thousand. So the state assumes like that's like for her people, what you're supposed to. And then they, they assume, because it's special.
That's what you're supposed to be paying, so you're not going to get reimbursed for what you are already obligated to pay at the school.
And then they multiply by four, because it's a special ed student. So special education costs more, you know, in general, because most special ed students are getting general ed and special ed.
So they're saying the extra, the additional cost is actually like about fifty K, so they're willing to reimburse off of that?
Right.
Okay.
So, yes.
Every school has their own foundation, correct? Foundational budget. Does it, do they have their own?
They kind of do, but that's like the state average, like that number is from the state. So when we're all working on it, that's the number that we use.
Okay. Forty-nine is for everybody.
Yes.
That's. Got it.
Forty-nine is four times the foundation figure for general ed.
Okay, because every town has their per people. Sorry, they have their per people spending.
Different.
But we, right, so the state gives you that, or may just say you spend. Is it like your average?
They give you foundation dollars.
And then it's based on like, you know, some districts, we get more money because they're low income. But they just kind of like, kind of like across the board, say, okay, forty-nine thousand. So sometimes, some tuitions are, you know, forty-two thousand, so it does not make that amount. That some of the collaboratives are, you know, don't make that amount, which we're grateful for, because we still don't get the full amount back. So it's kind of like this challenge formation, always like try to, you know, see what we can get out of it. But yeah, that's, that's the theoretical piece of it. It is complicated. And then we do, you know, the in-district is even more complicated, because it's based on the actual services, not what we pay, but what the state says would be like a delivery for a special ed teacher or leader. So then, this is sort of what we have gotten of the last several years. So we start in fiscal year eighteen, so again, that's the amount we would have gotten that we got in this, like, beginning of the school year, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, it's, it's based on the previous year, that makes sense, it's so. And then we get the money fiscal year eighteen, and that's how the state reports it. So we were at a million forty-seven thousand seven hundred ninety-one. Then I just kind of like, you know, did some fun math about percentages increase or decrease. So the following year, it increased about fifteen thousand. Then it increased a whopping one hundred forty-two thousand seven hundred and twelve. But then the following year was a tough year, because it decreased. And we also, we had an audit that resulted in fifty thousand dollars less. It was also the year that they reimbursed us at seventy percent, not seventy-five percent. And they changed the foundation amount in the middle of the year. So there was like all these things going on. I came in just in time for the audit, so that was fun. But that school year, we, I did the extraordinary relief, which I like to do, because I like to get a jump start. And we actually qualified, because we got an extra three hundred ninety-seven thousand. So that kind of offset, you know, that. And then the following year, you can see the amount increased a lot. And then this last school year increased slightly, and I'm still working on it to see where we'll be for next year. So, and you can see the number of eligible students, so it's not always based on the number of students, because you have some students. Because you have some students, like I mentioned, that go to a program that doesn't cost as much and other students, more expensive programs. But it kind of gives you a, a ballpark, I mean, these are actual, but it gives you an estimate of the number of students. So please help with that. So, any questions? Sorry, so I'm delayed, but I.
I want to thank you for showing us in print the circuit breaker formula, because that's never been done before. I thank you for that.
Yeah, I'm just grateful, I, I think tonight we've seen, I just have a great appreciation and I don't think our community always sees. The work that you do to advocate for our students, not just showing up in the classrooms and, and having the people there. But the work you have to do just with the numbers and the grants is incredible. And I'm just grateful that you showed us and that you're doing this great work for our students, so thank you, Dr. Boebert.
Thank you. My colleagues, Professor.
I do have a quick question, I, I appreciate all this too, I, I've never heard of maintenance of effort before, so I appreciate that. I have, do have a question, I, I'm going to guess you might give some credit to Dr. Dutcher. How do you determine the maintenance of effort dollars?
So when I write the grant, it's like a formula already built in, I just have to plug in the numbers. So I ask Dr. Dutch, okay, what's the, you know.
I'm assuming that what he's been able to do the last couple of years has made this easier to submit the grant for. I'm assuming the way that we're accounting for the special ed services is making it a little bit easier.
Yes, and, and the state now knows what we spend because they do the financial interview report. So that gets put in, but it's the two years before because then they know what exactly it is. So then they rely on that, they put it in, so that part is auto-generated, but yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I've never heard of maintenance of effort, I don't know why.
Yeah, I never paid a lot of attention to it until we almost did make it because the per pupil went down. But the overall was, was increased. So it's been around for a while and, and we used to, because I've been a special ed director for like seventeen years. So when I've been writing these grants for all that time, but they used to say, are you doing names? It's like, yes, yes. And now they're like, show us the numbers and they're very, like what used to be like a one-page brand is like a ten tab workbook now.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Brindley, can I just follow up real quick on that? Thank you, Dr. Boebert. Just think, the committee did ask for this, kind of like a special ed one-on-one, I'm glad we did it. It's, it's highly complex and I'm very grateful to have people like Dr. Boebert, who doesn't present much at these meetings. I think she really was able to put something very complex and to simplify, hopefully a simplified form. It also speaks to the partnership, I think, within our team with Dr. Boebert, working with Dr. Dodge regularly. I mean, regularly with Dr. Boebert just to talk about circuit breaker, believe it or not, we spend hours just talking about that. Keeping me updated, according in layman's terms even for me to understand. So I know she gives a lot of credit to Dr. Dodge, which she deserves, but since the numbers, I think, shorted there too. Since Dr. Boebert came on board, we've saved an incredible amount of money and she's been very. So that's what you, very conscientious, but also very aggressive on supporting, securing funds for our kids. In ways that weren't done in the past, so that really helps our budget, even this fourteen percent, she kind of glossed over that. Lucky, but there's a lot of work behind the scenes where we were able to avoid a huge hit on that because of her due diligence. Just want to thank her.
Well said, I absolutely one hundred percent agree. It's like since day one, Michelle was all over the grants and getting everything. Aggressive and definitely, yeah, remember, for all good reasons, I appreciate it. Right? Oh, grass is up here, we have no minutes to approve this evening, we have no warrants to approve this evening. There's no correspondence. Does anyone have any other business?
Can I just say one thing, Bill, quickly? So we approved the three contracts tonight and I just think, you know, we're, we're sharing lots of accolades tonight. And I think it's really important that our community also recognize that approving these contracts. And really, it's a, to me, it's really important to commend the superintendent for paying close attention to these contracts. Because we know the labor market for teachers and leaders in K to twelve right now. And it's so important, I don't think we can emphasize enough how important it is to have the continuity of the fantastic leadership team we have. And so I just wanted to say publicly how much I appreciate Superintendent Burkhead working so closely with his team and being aware that. We have a strong team and our team is in demand, I think it's okay for me to say that. And we want to hold on to them and so, so even when we're arguing about budgets and worrying us, worrying about us being good stewards. I think this is, this is the reason we have somebody like Superintendent Burkhead, who's making these tactical nuanced decisions. To keep our schools moving in the right direction, so I just wanted to thank you, Bill, for, for that work.
Absolutely agree, one hundred percent. All right, our next meeting will be Monday, April tenth. Oh, that annual town meeting. And our next meeting, and quote, okay. We're not being, no. I think it's on the, it's on the calendar.
We should always post that maybe.
Yeah, yeah, okay, just. And with that said, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at eight oh two?
Second, all in favor?